I'm going to bring the meeting to order tonight. Judy, or I mean Rebecca, will you please call the roll?
Flora.
Here.
Esti.
Here.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Tohill.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Regarding the agenda, on your second page, the action item that says consideration to authorize letter of support of downtown housing grant program application will be deleted, that's not needed tonight, and are there any other changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I would ask that in regards to public forum and appearances, that the Beautification Commission annual report be the first appearance, and then the following appearances all have to do with the statement of intent, so they should follow.
Okay.
And for the sake of continuity, that immediately following the resolutions to be considered, the first resolution to be considered be the consideration of the statement of intent for the city of Fairfield, Iowa, rather than the consideration of job description for future support for sustainability coordinators. So basically moving the number two resolution for consideration to the top of that particular section of the meetings.
Any objections to that, Council?
No.
Okay. So on the consent agenda, we have approval of the minutes of the November 30th, 2021 special council meeting, approval of the minutes of the January 10th, 2022 council meeting, approval of January 18th, 2022 special payroll in the amount of $9,887.57, approval of January 21, 2022 payroll in the amount of $137,287.92, resolution authorizing funds transfers, approval of USDA step one debt in the amount of $12,975, approval of USDA wastewater treatment debt in the amount of $77,295, approval of general obligation debt in the amount of $84,372.50, approval of state revolving fund debt in the amount of $7,525, approval of the November finance report, approval of the December finance report, approval of the 2022 mobile home permits, acceptance of library board minutes, acceptance of the diversity, equity, and inclusion committee minutes, acceptance of the beautification commission minutes, resolution of approving employment of communications specialists, approval of liquor license for Hy-Vee meeting room, come and go number 134, University Amaco, approval of special claims in the amount of $5,548.93, approval of total claims in the amount of $269,416.92, and we have no claims above $75,000. So are there any questions, or I would take a motion to approve?
Are the mobile home permits all existing ones already, or are any of those new, do you know?
Rebecca, is that?
I believe they're all existing.
Yes.
Correct.
And I had a question regarding leisure living. Last year it was kind of tentative because of the roads conditions. Do we know that's been cleaned up a little bit?
I have not heard anything about the road conditions.
Okay, I know.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
So I just wanted to ask about the special claims. Didn't delineate what those were for the $5,500?
I didn't, I didn't look at.
That's the visa.
Visa bill, I think, on there.
Was that the visa bill?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it said it.
Okay, I didn't see that. So then I'll go ahead and report to the Council that the claims are all satisfactory, and there was one exception for truck company.
Sales tax, and that's been corrected.
Well, we paid sales tax, but that's been corrected. And then the other item I wanted to mention was there was some travel reimbursement where we paid tax on hotel rooms and things like that. I just want to make the Council aware that when I was a state employee, we would carry a letter with us that would show the hotel, whomever, that we were tax exempt, so you might consider putting that together so that when people travel, they can produce that letter and claim the tax exempt status. That's all. Oh, the $13,000 claim from the county, we still don't have invoices for those claims, but I know that Erin called the auditor's office. What did they say? I can't remember what they said, though.
I asked them to, boy, that's hot, Mike, I asked them to provide copies of the invoices for the next claim. I didn't realize we had a claim already sent to us, so.
Okay.
I talked to the auditor, she's going to pass that on so that we can get copies of the invoice.
Right, so you just crossed wires?
Yep.
Okay. So in the interest of transparency and doing normal business like the city does, we would expect to receive invoices from the county for all those claims. Right now we just get a spreadsheet with the name of the provider and the dollar amount and a description. That's all.
Okay. Erin, could you have Scott check on leisure living and the roads?
Yeah, we'll check with them.
We just discussed that last year, if you remember.
Yep.
Just hopefully there's been some improvement.
Yep.
Doug, did you make a motion? I'm sorry.
No, I didn't.
Okay.
But I will if you need one.
We needed a motion to approve the agenda.
Prove the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, moved by Flora, second by Tohill. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. Rebecca, please call the roll.
Ornoy?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes, except I abstained from approval of the minutes for the November 30th meeting as I was not present.
Anderson?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Yes.
Rasmussen? And Ham?
Yes.
Okay, great. Next item will be the annual report from the Beautification Commission. Who's here for that? Yep, go ahead, Paula. You're up. You want to go to the podium there so the microphone, people can hear you?
So I'm Paula Armstrong, representing the Beautification Commission. This is our annual report, and we are a group of seven community members, we'd be happy to have more, and we oversee beautification efforts for the city. Our main focus is the downtown area, but we also take care of the different entry points to Fairfield, and we kind of have a broad eye on different businesses and homeowners, and we recognize them with a beautification award. So our annual report lists, and I think you have a copy in your notes, it lists some of the projects we've been doing this year and some of our goals for next year. We have, we organize volunteers, we have about 20 volunteers who take care of the nodes downtown, and we have a lot of volunteers who help with special projects as well. So we're always looking for more, and one of the things, a couple of things we want to do this year are to take care of the weeds in the sidewalks downtown and try to maintain and get rid of a lot of the graffiti, and we have a volunteer, Clean Wash, who wants to free of charge help businesses, he'll take care of graffiti on businesses. So mainly, I'm wondering if there's anything that you have a question about. Oh, we are right in the middle of our fiscal year now, so when you see our report, we've spent about a third of the budget, and this is typical because the spring is when we spend about two-thirds of our budget, and that goes toward the planters and the baskets and replacing shrubs and trees and that kind of thing. So anything you are wondering about, or I can help you with?
How much time and energy are you having to do to remove the graffiti? How much is there?
Well, we did a survey of the downtown, Central Park and a block each way, and there's a fair amount, but Jake Deal with Clean Wash thinks he can get rid of that in not too much time.
Paula, who's on the commission now?
We have seven, Joanne Reed, myself, Sue Gale, Lou Bolster, Jerry Moore, Mark Lesniak, and Meredith Simson.
And are you?
We meet monthly.
Are you short a couple of members yet?
We can have as many as 10, so we have seven right now. We'd love to have two or three more. So anyone who's listening, you're welcome to contact me or Sue Gale.
Or myself.
Or kind.
I'll push them to you.
Yes, or the Mayor.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you. Well, we are passionate about making Fairfield a place that it's nice to live and nice to visit, and so we really enjoy volunteering for this.
Great, thank you so much. Any other questions? Please give our thanks to the commission, and you know, we really do appreciate all the work that you guys do to make Fairfield look pretty.
Thank you.
So. Okay, so we're going to move on now to our other public forum and appearances, and hopefully everybody who's going to speak has the list, and I'm going to give you some rules of the road, so to speak, here. So when you come up to the microphone, we'd like you to loudly and clearly, not too loudly, but clearly state your name and your address, so that helps identify what ward you're in so the councilors can know if they're in your ward. Each speaker will have three minutes. At two and a half of minutes, Erin is going to wave his sign there so you know you have 30 seconds, and I know that this is going to be short from one standpoint, we know that you'd like to speak a little longer, but we've gotten a lot of input through email, so I think, and a lot of good information. At three minutes, I will ask you to stop, but Erin's going to use his phone, so it'll be, hopefully you'll be able to hear it, too. So I want you to be succinct in your comments and address your comments to the whole Council. Personal tax will not be tolerated, so, and also if someone has stated what you were going to state, we would request that you defer to the next speaker. The same comment is not needed two or three times in a row, so we'd appreciate that. And so additionally, I'm just asking that there be no outbursts, that we keep a level of decorum, no boos, no clapping, cheers, et cetera, so, and if we can't keep that, you know, we will ask you to leave, but I am feeling very confident that we will have that tonight, so. So our first person, Scarlett Riddle, are you here?
I'm here.
And Aaliyah, is that correct?
She'll be speaking separately.
Okay. Okay.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I guess the time's starting?
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Scarlett, and I moved to Fairfield almost five years ago. I was born and raised in South Carolina, which is a part of the Bible Belt in the southern states. I came from a highly religious Catholic community there. Growing up in this environment, the LGBT community was nothing but an abstract concept to me. I did not knowingly meet a gay man until I was 17 years old. I was raised by the church to think that anyone who was not straight would be going to hell, but even as a child, I couldn't understand why. At the time, I thought God loved everyone, and I remember being confused about this for years. As I grew to find out, I was a lesbian. Once I was able to put the word to how I was feeling, a lot of aspects of my life began to make sense. Of course, not everyone was happy to hear about this, while I had the support of some, others were hoping that they could fix the problem. I was asked by someone I love to consider conversion therapy, and as most of you know, conversion therapy is not a legitimate practice. This is a range of dangerous and discredited practices that falsely claim to change a person's sexual orientation or gender identity. The act of conversion therapy is cruel and degrading, and in many cases, torture, and sadly, only 20 states currently have laws banning its use against minors. One of the states that doesn't have laws protecting minors from this practice is Iowa. But I did not come to this city meeting to get, to try getting this out-of-date practice banned from this state. I am here to show you that discrimination is still alive and well in this country. I have been told that it is not too late for me, I have been told by men that they can fix me, I have seen my trans friends be told that they are not valid, my gay friends could not legally get married until as recently as 2015, when it was federally passed. While we have made great social progress as a country, this does not mean all discrimination has been eliminated. That can be especially true in small towns. I have been made to feel illegitimate and like I don't belong in some communities. That is why I feel like these anti-discrimination policies are very important to uphold. When I heard what some of the city council members said during the last meeting, I began to think to myself, do they personally know anyone in the LGBT community? Do they have any friends a part of a minority group that is subject to discrimination? My intention of coming here was so that you could meet just one of your lesbian citizens and to let you know that this community is in full support of the DEI's letter of intent. This letter is a clear call to action saying that we cannot tolerate outdated opinions in this town. It is clear to me that prejudice still exists here. Our community is diverse, and that is what makes Fairfield so special to me. I feel that by embracing the DEI's letter of intent, we can remind every one of our citizens that they will be protected here and welcome with open arms. Thank you.
Thank you. Isla?
Mayor.
Yes.
We have a question about clarification of the speaking time, if you could.
Sure. Three minutes. You each have three minutes.
I just want to ask just a quick question.
Okay.
So in the January 10th meeting, there was 38 minutes allowed to, about the letter of intent and not support, so I wonder if those of us in support could also be afforded 38 minutes?
Well, we have a lot of other agenda items that we have to cover tonight.
Most of us are going to be shorter than 38 minutes. I know you had a lot of agenda items last time as well, and so I wonder if we could just be offered the equal amount of time in support of the letter of intent.
I think, well, normally it's three to five minutes.
Correct.
And so we're going to try to keep it to three minutes as much as possible. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll be able to finish our thought, if we hit our three minutes, we can finish that point or thought.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. Now, do you have more thoughts, or were you going to speak as well?
Later, yes. It's not my turn.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Eric Schaefer?
Hi, I'm Eric Schaefer. Been a resident since 1988. I reside at 408 West Low, and I was in the police reserve for seven years, and I have a PhD in psychology. And so I wanted to try to shed a little light, because it is correct that pedophilia is a horrible, horrible thing. Takes decades to recover, people can't even speak about it, and it's unimaginable. But it's very important that we understand that almost all pedophiles are men, and only a tiny fraction are homosexual. It's not true that homosexual and pedophilic, those are not related. There is no P in LGBTQ. But why do we hold on to something like that? It's because it's one of many things that make us feel better, that let us hold our lives together. We came here to the Americas, and we found a huge civilization, and we committed genocide and we stole their land. But we tell ourselves a story that they were ignorant savages, godless heathens, and we make fun of them. And those stories justify that bias and that mistreatment because it lets us feel like, yeah, we're okay. We brought over a bunch of black people in bondage, we took their labor, we raped their women, we sold the babies for profit, but we told ourselves the story that they were slow and ignorant, and the men were dangerous, and so it was okay. And we have to hold on to those stories because otherwise we're bad. And you know, it's kind of the same with the LGBTQ people. In my lifetime, the gay pride started, I was there as a child, we were living next to the stone wall, and I saw that riot. That riot happened because there was a cool thing there. America was great in these times. So there was, there was an opportunity to go and find somebody who was gay and blackmail So we make up these stories that they're pedophiles, that they don't contribute to society. The most important man in recent times was Alan Turing, a gay man. Alan Turing won World War II by cracking the Enigma Code, and he invented the computer. And he was a gay man who we convicted and chemically sterilized and caused to commit suicide. So let's be careful about our fellow citizens who are diverse. Let's value them and the road they've been on. Let's sign that letter and recognize that Fairfield should be an inclusive place.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Eric.
So you bring up a great movie, so if you haven't seen the movie about him, it's worth watching. Thank you, Eric. Matthew Rowe?
3,000 years ago, a princess was kidnapped, a mighty host was gathered to sail across the King's Sea, and a city was set to siege. We all know this story. Through a decade of violence, heroes died, legends were born, and the conflict reached the heavens. But that city was not brought low by sword or arrow, but by a clever ruse. A mighty wooden horse was placed before its gates. On the surface, a message of peace and friendship returned to happier times, but within its hollowed trunk lay only treachery. The statement before you and in question is much like that horse. Each term on the page is good and kind, even comforting. However, they have each been chosen for their fragile nature. Take justice. It has a dual meaning. The justice that we know and care for is blind. It is the justice of the law and the justice of God. It affects each of us personally, based on our own individual actions. Social justice, however, applies to groups, and if a group of 100 men stand before you to be judged on the actions of only 99, then in judging them, you commit injustice upon the one, and that will stain your soul. Other terms require context. We all appreciate inclusion, but had the king of Troy so long ago adopted an exclusionary policy towards gifts he found at his front gates, that city might still stand today. So here's what I ask of you. You're hearing many speeches tonight. Take some time, mull over the words that have been spoken, read the breakdown that I will provide to you explaining the potential harm found within each term, and if you still wish to move forward with this proposal, I ask that you revise it. For the words with many definitions, define what is meant, and for the words that require context, add context. As you can tell, this issue weighs heavily on all of our hearts, and we appreciate your careful deliberation. Thank you.
Thank you. What was your address, Matthew?
It is 702 South Fourth Street.
Thank you. Think he's out in the other room, so it looks like he'll, they're going to get him. Okay. We'll move on to Hannah Moselli. Is Hannah here?
Yep. I live at 207 West Jefferson Avenue. I'm part of the queer community, a parent, a taxpayer, Iowa-born and raised. My family has a long history of being farmers, preachers, and teachers. I've lived in Fairfield most of my adult life, and as a child, came to the big city, Fairfield, for groceries and entertainment. My partner owns a business that employs many Fairfield residents. I'm truly proud to live here and call this place home. I honestly don't want to live anywhere else. However, I have some concerns about the events that took place last city council meeting. First, I want to voice my support for the letter of intent brought before the council by the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. The letter is unobjectionable. Simply, it doesn't even go as far as Iowa law already requires. And although the law should not need reiterating, apparently it does. Members of this city council, specifically you, Councilmember Ham, expressed intent to not adhere to and uphold the Iowa Code. So please reiterate that law and vote yes on the letter of intent. Second, I just want to address comments made by Councilmember Ham on January 10th. We won't stand while you equate queer and trans folks to, and I quote, "perverts, groomers, and sex traffickers." Many folks here today have spoken to, or will speak to, science-based, proven ways in which that language harms our youth, which you also care deeply about. However, I'm here to speak to you about your job descriptions. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, that I will faithfully and impartially, to the best of my ability, discharge all the duties as city council member for the city of Fairfield, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law. Sound familiar? Those are the oaths you all swore when taking office. You swore to faithfully and impartially do as Iowa law requires. Iowa law requires you to provide equal access to all protected classes outlined in Iowa Code, Chapter 216, which includes the same list you will find in the letter of intent, including queer and trans folks. If you cannot follow the law, you cannot uphold your oath. However, I hope that we can all move forward from this, offer a public apology to the queer community, and let's move on together. And I just want to make one final point to you, Councilmember Ham. In your meeting hosted at Phoenix Rising, you said we needed to decide not to be offended, just like you, and I want to clarify, none of us here are offended. I'm not offended. I'm proud. I'm proud to be queer, I'm proud to be a parent, I'm proud to be from Fairfield, and because I'm proud of that, I ask you and the rest of city council to do better, set a better example than the one you are currently setting, because that one's disappointing, and that's why we're here, the queer community, today, to provide a better example for our youth, for my son, who came with me today, and his friends, and I don't want them to be disappointed in our elected officials as I am. So again, please vote yes on the letter of intent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Hannah. Thank you, Hannah. If you could please refrain from clapping, I'd appreciate it. It'll make it go quicker. And time for more comments. So Allison Stimson? Can you tell us your, well, I guess I just called your name, but give us your address, please?
I'm at 410 West Low Avenue.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good people. My name is Allison Stimson. I was born in this town and have lived and worked as a computer programmer here since 2014. This is just to say I am a committed and tax-paying member of this community. I am a transgender woman, and I didn't realize this until I was nearly 40. If any of you have questions after tonight, I am Allison Stimson on Facebook, and I am happy to answer your questions. First, I want to zoom out and examine why statements of intent matter at all. It is easy to dismiss them as empty performative gestures, something the woke left uses to distract hardworking people from real issues like taxes. Nothing could be further from the truth. Statements of intent are important. They are important because legal and civil systems are made up of both hard and soft parts, just like we are, a hard skeleton of rules and a soft tissue of conventions and attitudes that gives those rules form, interpreting any gaps and deciding how they are enforced. The original U.S. Constitution did not say that only men could vote, but 132 years passed during which most states did not allow women to vote before the 19th Amendment forced all states to allow it. There have only been 102 years since then. It will be the year 2053 before the U.S. Constitution will have allowed women to vote for longer than it has denied them that right by omission. Think about that. This is an example of how an absence of a statement at the federal level allowed a soft rule to dictate the real hard rules that came into play at the state level. Society at the time assumed that power was synonymous with men. This was used to deny women the right to vote until 1920. Leadership is about more than rulemaking, and the statements we make tell others how we feel about the issues and affect how they feel as well. Silence is a statement. Your hesitancy in accepting this statement of intent speaks volumes. The statement of intent is important. It isn't specifically about LGBTQIA+ issues, and none of those letters or what they stand for appear in the statement. The statement, and I quote, "condemns discrimination based on faith, race, sexual orientation, gender, nationality, age, immigration status, military status, class, ability." This statement offers protection to 10 overlapping ways in which society can be divided. Freedom of speech was a concern mentioned. I'm not entirely sure what was meant, but it appears to me that it was in reference to the use of pronouns in schools and other protections against discrimination. The First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution prevents state actors from limiting the freedom of speech of citizens. It was created in, I'm going to skip to the end here. You get the idea. A refusal to acknowledge that this group has unique needs and a desire to be seen by representatives is a refusal to represent part of your constituency. There will be no taxation without representation. We are dues-paying members of the Fairfield community, of Jefferson County, of Iowa, and of America, and we will not be silenced. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Jonathan Walton?
Hello. My name is Jonathan Walton. I live at 1,000 North Fourth Street. I am an MIU student, and I am the president of the MIU's Queer Coalition Club. Marishi Young International University welcomes and celebrates rich diversity of cultures, backgrounds, identities, and values in a community that cultivates openness and togetherness, authenticity and respect, kindness and mutual support. In the nearly half-century since the school's founding, thousands upon thousands of students, many of whom are queer, have passed through Fairfield, enriching the town in many ways. Whether toothpaste or shoes or a slice of pizza, if we want it on campus, we are spending money here in Fairfield to get it, contributing millions of dollars every year to Fairfield's economy. Some students never leave, starting families, starting businesses, making investments, and spreading the name and reputation of this small Midwestern town to every corner of the nation and the globe. Reputation that Fairfield is a wonderful place, a great place to raise a family, a great place to start a business, a great place to get your degree. And a core part of what makes Fairfield such a great place is that the community reflects the values of MIU. Or maybe MIU reflects the values of Fairfield. Either way, here in Fairfield and at MIU, no matter what you look like, or where you're from, or who you love, or how you pray, it is expected that you will be welcomed and treated fairly for as long as you choose to live here. Judy Hamm's comments are a flat contradiction of the reputation of Fairfield and prove definitively that we, the community, need this commitment in writing. Cultures that label us degenerates and predators are precisely what many of us came here to escape, and hearing the same language here from people in authority is a red flag for anyone in the LGBTQ community and signals to queer people who live here or want to live here that this is not a safe place for us. We shouldn't have to live in fear of our fellow residents nor our government. If the city council is truly interested in listening to the constituents and reassuring our faith in them, then they should have no problem signing a document that not only guarantees but promotes diversity, equality, and inclusion for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ayla, is that how you say your name?
Yes, Ayla.
Ayla, sorry.
Hi. So my name is Ayla Cypressma. I live at 1004 South Main Street. I am a student of psychology about to graduate. I'm a senior, and I'm an old student of Professor Florine. Hello, nice to see you again. For simplicity, I'll be referring to the LGBT community as the queer community throughout my speech. I have an anxiety disorder, so if I talk way too fast, I'm sorry. So anyway, let me start. I would like to first state that I have listened to the comments made at the last council meeting about the letter of intent set forth by the DEI. To this, I say we, the queer community, as you can see, have heard your concerns. And you are right, this is not a funny matter. We are disappointed by the hurtful comments and lack of empirical evidence to support the claims of sex trafficking and perversions that were said about the queer community. It is clear to many who have listened to Monday night's council meeting that the letter of intent is one that will help protect our queer children, queer, and families from harmful comments that came from our own council. Oh, that's page three. So I offer you some peer-reviewed scientific studies that have been conducted that may clear up the concerns brought out by certain council members. 27% of queer Iowans have children. I am a stepmother, and she is here tonight. 34% of queer Americans report that they are verbally harassed in the bathroom. Suicide is the leading cause of death among all youths, and queer teens are at the highest. Do we all remember our teen that we lost here that was queer just a few years ago on the railroad tracks? My point is that we ask you to pass this letter of intent, and we ask you to see how remarks such as the ones made by the city councilwoman are harmful to the very youth she claims to be worried about. Sadly, the reality is that the vast majority of child sex offenders are heterosexual men, 80%, and these men are found to have children of their own in marriage. Did you know that in 2007, sexual orientation was ranked as the third highest motivator for hate crime, right behind race and religion? That nearly 1 out of 10 queer employees have left a job establishment because the environment was unwelcoming? That the American Psychological Association defines homophobia as "a dread or fear of gay men and lesbians associated with prejudice and anger towards them that leads to discrimination in such areas as employment, housing, and legal rights, and sometimes violence or gay bashing." Finally, the 14th Amendment promises us, "nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of the law, nor deny any person within its jurisdiction the equal protections of that law." I ask the council to hear these statistics and understand that we need more than this simple letter and to please pass it. I offer you a statement made by the, actually, I'll skip it, but I have a statement in favor of us by the superintendent of the Iowa School, Fairfield School Districts. I also have a statement by Iowa Safe Schools Organization, but our time was cut short. They are saying, though, the Iowa Safe School Organization, that elected city council members are charged with representing not only the city in which they serve, but also its constituents, regardless of their sexual orientation or gender. In conclusion, I myself have faced my own pain, even here in Fairfield. I faced it just the other week when I watched that video of this last council meeting. I have been discriminated against and hated on for being queer. I have also been loved for it. I'm a performer, after all. I thank you for your time, and I hope you hear our desperation and our plea for safety and our fear of not having you anymore. Even though you do not see it, it doesn't mean it doesn't exist in our community. If we do not pass this, there is only more room for discrimination and hate and fear to grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ayla. Did you email those letters of support?
Yes, from the Iowa Safe Schools Organization and jurisdiction.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to confirm. I think we all had lots of emails, so I thought I remembered that one. Okay, Alex. Alex Toll, is that right? Toll, okay?
Hi, I'm Alex Toll. I go to school here in Fairfield, and I am female to male transgender. I have faced a lot of discrimination. Obviously, that's why I'm here saying this stuff. But I would quickly like to touch on what was said in the last city council meeting. It's simply not true. There is no correlation between pedophilia, sex trafficking, and the LGBT community. I don't know where someone would have gotten that, but it's just simply not true. Now, for the discrimination, I have faced quite a bit. It's gotten better since I moved to here in Fairfield, but there's still a long way to go. I used to go to Pekin down by Packwood, and I was the only transgender person there. I was one of the only out people there as far as being LGBT goes. A lot of people gave me a lot of crap for that. People stole my stuff for PE. They bullied me. They would not leave me alone. They deadnamed me. They misgendered me, and they would not leave me alone. Now, since moving to Fairfield, things have improved, and this is my first time fully and publicly coming out, so people at my school may see this, and I fully welcome that. I feel like I'm able to handle that now, but of course, I'll see. But there is always a little bit of a challenge that comes with that. There is always people that will try and discriminate against me. There are always people that will try to bring people like me down. But things will get better eventually. Now, I didn't really write out a script for this, so I'm just kind of taking this where my brain goes. But I feel like I've pretty much said everything that I really want to, just that there's no correlation in pedophilia and sex trafficking to the LGBT community, and that there still is a lot of issues with LGBT discrimination here. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Appreciate it, sharing your story. Rick, I'm not sure if you heard, you have three minutes.
Okay. All right. I'm Rick Shattuck, 1 Shattuck Street. And proposing, we also have a current cultural advisory committee. DEI says we need more people of color. I am a person of all colors, is a spinning wheel, and I'm a card-carrying member of the NAACP. We should just get over this skin color thing. We're all people of color. Every one of you. And no one's special, no one should be discriminated against. So I propose that our committee, the current culture advisory committee, meet with the multicultural advisory committee to work out a better resolution, one that we can all get behind. And also do clarify some facts. You know, Iowa was not a slave state. 11,000 Iowans fought in the Civil War to end slavery in 1865. We don't have a problem here. Africa still has slavery today. So please go to the website stopafrikanslavery.com. And the current proposal, it sounds kind of anti-white. And so we're being discriminated against as well. And there are people, George Soros and Communist Party of China, who want to divide and conquer America, set us against each other. They have 1.4 billion people, 91% of the same race, not diverse at all. So Chinese art of war says, "Get the enemy to fight themselves," trying to get us to fight ourselves. So once communists take over, we have seen in the past that it results in mass murders, even to those who helped them get into power. So with the multicultural advisory committee, I'd like to ask them, just to clarify some terms. They say, "So we condemn all discrimination. So we condemn using our brains to decide between choices." We discriminate every day. When we go to Hy-Vee, we discriminate against bad apples. Everyone in this council was elected due to the discrimination by the voters. It wasn't a random lottery drawing, hey, do you want to be the mayor now? Do you want to be the mayor? So we have a woman mayor and not Michael Haley, based on conservative versus liberal values. It wasn't man versus woman. We have, Fairfield voted for a black councilman, Mr. Gandy, not Brad Friger, because it was Democrat versus Republican. It was not black versus white. So Fairfield already discriminates properly, based on ideas, policies, consensus of character.
Rick, your three minutes is up. Can you wrap up your last thought there, please?
Sure. Okay. Well, discrimination, for lack of a better word, is good when it's based on merit. It's helped the upward surge of mankind for generations. Our ancestors discriminated which man or woman they would mate with to produce us. So Iowa's demographics is just fine. And if it's 90% white, hey, that's the way it worked out. Birds of a feather flock together. It's not a problem to be fixed by proclamation by an unelected committee making those proposals. So diversity has not really worked out so well for St. Louis. They have the highest crime rate, and they're the most diverse.
Thank you, Rick. Okay, thank you, Rick. We appreciate it.
And police, whenever they arrest someone of the opposite race, they are vilified and sometimes put in jail. That's wrong. So we're finding a way with our, let's just let nature handle it, not the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we will move on to resolution, action items, and ordinances. So the first action item is consideration of statement of intent for the City of Fairfield, Iowa. The first thing that we've asked someone from the committee to come, and you should have all received also an email with descriptions and definitions. I hope you all read that. I think Adrian, is Adrian here?
Yep.
Oh, there you are. I didn't see you back there. So she's going to share that with us, and then we'll take the next step.
I have the definitions here with me, so we can go through those at any point, but I wanted to just give a little backstory on how the statement came about. So thank you for having us here again to talk about this. I'm Adrian Logston. I'm one of the co-chairs of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. So a little backstory on just the crafting of the statement. It involved the seven members of the DEI committee. We spent hours of research on the content and the format of similar statements that have been published by surrounding cities in Iowa. And I really encourage anyone interested to have a look at some of the statements released by the cities of Ames, Cedar Rapids, Iowa City, Des Moines, and Davenport. Those were some of the statements that we researched when we were looking on crafting our own. Also about a statement of intent, it's not a policy. It's not legally binding. It also doesn't impact the mentioned class's accountability to the laws that govern the City of Fairfield. But we still firmly believe that this statement is a very effective way of assuring your constituents that you are willing to uphold the existing anti-discrimination policies that are outlined in your handbook, and that an atmosphere of tolerance is a priority to you. And we felt that it was a statement of like this is also very important because our community is full of diversity, and therefore tolerance and harmony is all the more crucial and important. And having served on this committee for a year and a half, I've had the privilege of hearing stories from constituents of Fairfield. And their stories have really reaffirmed my commitment to this statement and its importance. While it's really comfortable to... While it's really comfortable to believe that discrimination does not exist here, the people of this community who have entrusted me with their stories say otherwise. And we're not immune to the effects of discrimination, and this might be a good time to reference what we mean when we say discrimination, which, as defined in the dictionary, is the practice of unfairly treating a person or a group of people differently from other people or groups of people. So that's what we mean when we say discrimination in this statement. By passing this statement, we believe that you are reaffirming to your constituents that you agree with the existing anti-discrimination policies as provided in federal and state law, and that you're willing to stand up for the safety and well-being of those who are different from yourself. And I'll take us through the statement briefly, and feel free to refer to your definitions if you have them, and we can touch on those afterwards as much as necessary, those definitions that I've printed up for you, so that you know what we mean when we say the words that we're using in the statement. So line one, we have, "Whereas the city of Fairfield believes in and stands for values of diversity, equity, fairness, inclusion, and justice." So again, feel free to refer to your definitions, but what this means in the context of this statement is that Fairfield believes in having lots of different people living here together, being treated fairly, including their perspectives in conversation, and helping them succeed. That's what we mean in that line. Second line, "Whereas the city of Fairfield condemns discrimination based on faith, race, sexual orientation, gender, nationality, age, immigration status, military status, class, ability." So a reminder here that this statement does not impact the mentioned class's accountability to the laws that govern the city of Fairfield. And as per your definitions, when we say discrimination, we mean that nobody should be treated unfairly on account of who they are. Next line, "Whereas the city of Fairfield welcomes all people and recognizes the rights of individuals to live their lives with dignity, and whereas the city of Fairfield will continue to work to ensure that everyone has the resources they need to succeed by making our city services, programs, and public spaces accessible and open to all individuals." So this is stating that Fairfield recognizes that resources and public spaces, such as libraries and parks, are for the benefit of everyone. "Whereas the city of Fairfield believes in the public sector for the public good, and advancing equity and inclusion is critical to the success of our communities and our nation." What we mean here in this line is that the city of Fairfield believes including everyone and helping everyone succeed is good for the city and for the nation. "Whereas the city of Fairfield is committed to leading with respect and acceptance of difference, and now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Fairfield, Iowa, that the city's commitment to the values of diversity, equity, fairness, inclusion, and justice is hereby reaffirmed." And before we move on, I just want to remind you all of the timeline of this statement. It was placed before you in writing at the November 22 city council meeting. When Mayor Boyer asked the council to reach out to the committee, should there be any questions or feedback, and then the statement was presented for a vote at the January 10 city council meeting, as you remember, I'm sure, we have not been contacted with questions or feedback, but I'm hopeful that the definitions you received will clarify what we intended. And now that we've received a lot of public support behind the statement, and because of the length of time that it's already been in the hands of council, we basically want to, as a committee, strongly recommend that this statement be brought to a vote tonight. And I'm here for questions, and I'm happy to go through the definitions if we'd like to do that.
Great, thanks, Adrian.
Absolutely.
And I don't know if you said, but you've been working on this since June.
Yes, since June of last year.
Yes, so council, questions for Adrian?
What was the genesis of the committee? How did it start?
The committee?
Yes.
Do you want me to answer that?
I'm happy to. I was there, too.
Okay.
But Mayor Boyer, we had been emailing, this was in the summer of 2020, feel free to interject Mayor Boyer as well. It began as a multicultural committee, was the original name, and was a group of people appointed by Mayor Boyer. We chose to change the name Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee because we felt that those words better represented our mission. And I can remind the council as well that I presented in January of last year to have the name change approved to Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, and it was unanimously approved by the council. And I have the speech here if we want to go through that, but that was how we originally came about. Does that cover it, Mayor Boyer? Feel free to add.
Well, I would just like to say, in the summer of 2020.
Yep.
You know, we had, in Minneapolis, the George Floyd incident that took place. And just many days, for me, of reflection and seeing what was happening over the country, and knowing here in Fairfield that I have, personally, I have felt, you know, the university has been here for 50 years, and I still saw some disparity and some issues. And we've come a long way as a community, and that's what I want to focus on, and that's what I appreciate. But even, just so you know, even as last year, somebody, a young person, wrote to me and said, "I'm walking down the street, and a car truck goes by and yells." And I looked around, and I realized I was the only one on the sidewalk, and he said to me, I believe it was a mail in my email, that said, "I don't understand why they would yell such terrible things at me. I don't even know them." And so, you know, I'm hoping, my intention always was to create a culture of respect, an environment of safety for everyone. And I think we can do better as a community. We'll never get rid of all bullies. I wish I could say we would. We won't. They've been around for eons, and they will continue, but we can all try a little harder ourselves. And sometimes, when there's a little light on it, it reminds us of maybe some of our own biases, and, you know, just that we can do better. So that was my thinking at the very beginning, that I don't see a major problem here, but, you know, there are issues, and we've heard some tonight. So it causes us all to look at ourselves and say, "Can I do a better job?" Any other questions? Additional, Paul? Did you have another question?
No, I didn't. I applaud the mayor for having the courage to form this committee, choosing members I think are representative to the community to come together and do what they feel is the right thing to move the city forward. Obviously, there are disagreements, and there's some passionate disagreements. I get that. We've heard that. But I think overall, the wind of progress blows us in direction forward, and in my opinion, this is what this statement of intent does, moves us forward. For me, it's not a difficult question. It's not a difficult question for me to decide which way I would want to vote when we come to that, but I applaud the mayor and the members of the committee for taking those steps to put this together.
Thank you. I also might mention that in the 2020, oh, excuse me, the 2012 tenure plan we had, there was a section in there about care and community, and there were a few things in there that never got accomplished. And I believe that when people get to know each other, they're more accepting of each other, and they're not afraid of each other. And so that was also the impetus of, let's look at what those items were in there, and maybe we can do some of those things, and get to know each other as a community and as neighbors a little, you know, a little more. So does anyone else have any questions or comments for Adrian, or any general comments?
I'd like to make a comment, if I could, just briefly. Just wanted to acknowledge everybody here in the room, and thank everybody for coming out tonight, because I think that, you know, drawing attention to this issue and having everybody comment on it kind of hopefully reminds us of our shared humanity, and I think that's really important, and it's easy for us to kind of get caught up in resolutions and words and forget that this statement does have an impact, and there are members of our community who do face discrimination. So thank you, everybody, for coming out and sharing your stories tonight.
Let me just add that, and I also thank you all for coming out peacefully. Our community does that. All our community does that. So we got a number of us, we got emails and phone calls, we saw people we met throughout the course of our day, and they had their opinions and their strong beliefs, but everyone did it with respect for each other. And that's a big thing. That's something our whole city can be proud of. And to me, this statement of intent, I understand we had many people, voices in the LBGQ community speak tonight, but I think, to me, this statement of intention is so much broader than that. It means so much more. It covers so many, it covers all of us, so I think it's important to keep that in mind as we move forward.
And that's our intention with the statement, for it to cover the entire city.
Any other questions for Adrian?
I would like to know why we have a different set of statement in front of us that the rest of the public has not seen.
Okay, and I will, I'll answer that, Adrian. That's okay. So I did a lot of research over the weekend regarding the classes that are protected by Iowa law and the federal law. And last night, I spoke with Doug, too, and I asked him if he had any thoughts of any additions or something different wording, because, you know, we're hearing from a lot of people in the community about particular words or concerns. And last night, he, you know, again, when we talked very briefly, he didn't have any suggestions at that point, and I said, "Well, I'm going to offer up some." And then today, he emailed me, and so I kind of took both of our suggestions and put them together, and that's what you see in front of you. And if it's okay, I'll read what it says, and I'll also put why that word was put in there. Also, at your station, you have the Iowa Civil Rights Commission, and it gives you the classes that are protected here in Iowa, which is very, you know, thorough, I would say. So this statement is very similar to the original statement, and it reads like this. "Whereas the city of Fairfield government believes in and stands for the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness," I think you probably all recognize that from the Constitution, "and values diversity, equity, equality, inclusion, and justice." And I'll just say that the reason I added "government" is to be clear that this is our city government speaking to our citizens. It's an outward statement to our citizens. Equality was added because it appears that equity and equality means different things to different people, depending on what your opinion is. So equity, the definition in Webster's, is fairness or justice in the way people are treated, and equality means quality or state of being equal, having the same rights. So we brought both values together. Okay, number two. "Whereas the city of Fairfield government condemns discrimination based on faith, race, color, family status, gender, sexual orientation, nationality, age, immigration status, military status, class, and ability as protected by law." So two classes that were added were color and family status, and that's in the Iowa law. Three. "Whereas the city of Fairfield welcomes all people and recognizes the rights of individuals to live their lives with dignity while also respecting all laws and policies at every government level. And whereas the city of Fairfield will continue to make our city's services, programs, and public spaces accessible and open to all individuals. And whereas the city of Fairfield government believes in the public sector for the public good, and advancing equity, equality, and inclusion is critical to the success of our communities and our nation. Whereas the city of Fairfield government," and oh, by the way, that wasn't, the government wasn't put up in number four, so we'd have to stick it back up there. "Whereas the city of Fairfield government is committed to leading with respect and acceptance of difference, and now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Fairfield, Iowa, that the city's commitment to the values of diversity, equity, equality, inclusion, and justice is hereby reaffirmed." I think our city attorney has been very clear that our policy and many of the documents that we sign that have anti-discrimination language in it, we've already affirmed it. This is just a public statement reaffirming that. And that is our duty as elected officials to follow the law. John, do you want to add anything to that? Did I say that right?
You did, and this redraft, you tried...
John, can you go to the microphone? Sorry. Or hand him the microphone?
I've enjoyed being quiet, but I've got a few things to say. I know the mayor spent the weekend bouncing this back and forth with her husband, Bob. And Bob's a psychologist, and they gave very deep thought to the words that best fit what people generally understand, and I think the words that got added do that. As far as the sentiments that I expressed at the last meeting, and I sent the council a memo, and you're going to do some more of it tonight when we get down to action items, I agree, what the mayor said is completely accurate, but it is something that we've been affirming for decades. For the last 50 years, since the civil rights legislation federally, we regularly sit down in this room, we approve things that have to do with our city operations and our city finances. Tonight, the council's going to consider some service agreements and some contracts with a group called Crawford, Murphy, Tilly, and it's going to affect some funding for airport projects. And our airport projects are funded by FAA and DOT, state and federal, and every one of those projects that I've been around in the last 50 years, those projects are subject to probably between six and 12 federal Civil Rights Act requirements that we adhere to religiously because partly we believe in them, partly we also don't want to disqualify ourselves by doing things that are in any way discriminatory. So there are different motivations for being compliant, but they all come back to this room, and so when we talk about what are we affirming or reaffirming, we're affirming things that we've taken for granted every year in the way we operate. And that is something that this town can be proud of. Long-term, we have never rejected in any way the policies that are advocated by either the State or Federal Civil Rights Act. Chapter 216 of the Iowa Code is an afterthought summary of things that have been adopted during that same time from the federal legislation. And there are things that I think everybody in this room, when you think about it very carefully, we all believe in that. And that is something that this community, and its history, and its diversity, believes in. So the mayor's pointing out that it's an outward statement from government that is set out in this letter of intent that is being considered. Whether you decide it's necessary, or whether you decide it says enough, or the words are right, or they're powerful enough, or soft enough, that's what this discussion's all about. But in the end, the underlying concepts in it are things that we've been, as I say, we've been affirming it year after year in our operations and the way we do things and the documents we sign as a government. So if you got a question about that, or you want me to point something out, I can go to books and pages of the materials you're going to go through tonight in your actions, but it's what we do.
So council, I think that... So counsel, I think that, you know, you can, what action you want to take, you can approve the original. If you feel like this, again, this was offered up just tonight, because it was worked on today. If you feel like the public needs to see it, we can move it back to the next meeting. Yes, please, Adrian, go ahead.
I just wanted to share that Mayor Boyer was able to share the amendments, the adjustments that were made on this document ahead of time, so that I could share them with my co-chair, Motier Haskins. And he and I have given our approval of the support from the committee's side. So we will stand behind the statement with the changes that have been made. So if it goes to a vote tonight, then you have the committee's support for that.
Great, thank you, Adrian.
I would like to point out that as recently as 6:08 this evening, the council's still receiving input on the document that was presented at the last meeting. And I would, I would feel more comfortable if the revised document was made public before we act on behalf of the entire city, just because we still have people commenting on something that was done two weeks ago, as recently as an hour before the meeting tonight.
They've had their time, though, too. I mean, we can still be getting comments in two weeks.
Oh, absolutely. But I will tell you that I wasn't at the meeting, and it took me probably seven days before I watched it because I was that sick. So, I mean, there are extenuating circumstances going on right now that are preventing people from reacting maybe as timely as they would have before. I couldn't even get out of bed for three days, I was that sick. So I would like to think that we want to act on something that hasn't been presented to the public, and we're seeing this for the first time tonight.
We're seeing the amended...
The amended version for the first time.
The original version we saw November 22nd. And we, I think we saw, as I understand from the report this evening, we saw it November 22nd. All these, so I'm not sure, it's now January 24th, which is two months ahead from the original, first time it was presented to us, why we need additional time.
Because...
I mean, this, the statement of intent, as I understand, was presented to us November 22nd, and we were asked if we had any questions to pose them to the DEI. And from my understanding, we didn't, we didn't contact them. We had the opportunity, we've had the opportunity. So not to, not to put this statement of intent as it's originally written to vote tonight would be a delay that I don't think is necessary, given as much notice as the council has had.
This is the first I've seen this, and I would like to talk to other people about it, because I too have a whole big file here of people who have sent stuff to me. So that, to me, is the equitable way to handle this, is let other people digest it and speak into that as well, again. The other part, John was saying that, you know, we've done this year after year, and we've been affirming it, and that is part of the problem. It is part of the community now finding its voice and saying, "I have stayed quiet," but there is pushback. And they want to be able to know what is being said, why it's being said. I would like more eyes and ears, again, to look this over, think it through, and speak again. Because every time, every time, we are told, "Just keep your mouth shut, just get along, just do." And there are those who do want to have a voice. They're finding their voice, and they're not going to stay quiet and say, "Just because it's always been affirmed, we need to affirm it again." So I would like to hear from people, and I would like to give them that opportunity.
So what I'm referring to is the original statement of intent. The original statement of intent was presented to the council in November 22nd. I'm not referring to the amended one. I'm not referring to the modifications the mayor suggested. I'm referring to the one that we were given, presented to us in November, and asked if we had questions to approach our talk with the Diversity and Equity and Inclusion Committee. And from a hearing this afternoon, or this evening, we had the opportunity, we didn't take advantage of the opportunity. The time has come and gone. If we really wanted to change it, or really had a serious interest perhaps in modifying it, I think the thing to have done would have been back in November when we knew it was available, to make that, make that approach. Now, it's been two months. We should, I'm going to make a motion, I'll make the motion, that this statement of intent as originally written, as originally written, be approved as a statement of intent.
And I would second that.
And I would like to say, I appreciate the work Mayor Boyer put into this, but I kind of agree with Paul that we, there's no reason to put this off for another two weeks, or more. We've had it in front of us long enough.
Especially when this amended, amended language isn't even coming from, it doesn't sound like it's coming from, directly from the community. So if we're just coming up with amended language, then, like, for how long? We're just gonna keep tabling it and then making amendments?
Well, I do think it is coming from the community. Some of the words that were added were based on concerns from, from other members of the community. So, okay. But, you know, you can accept them or not accept them.
And the phrase "as protected by law" came from the memo that the city attorney sent to the...
I say, the city attorney sent some of this, too. So, and his, his need for definitions and verbiage, so.
But it's not law, so we could just, it's just a statement. It's not law, it's not policy.
Right, we have to understand this is not law, it's not an ordinance, it's not a city ordinance, it's not code, it's just, it's a statement of intent. What is the face that Fairfield wants to present to the broader community? What do we want to be showing to our, to our businesses, to our citizens, to those who are considering moving here, to those who are considering maybe not moving here and moving away? What do we want to present? I think the statement's pretty simple, it's pretty simple. It doesn't, it just says what it says, and we vote on it, and I hope we accept it and we move on. We just move on.
I feel that the revision certainly answers, answers some of our concerns that perhaps have been expressed, you know, through emails and through, you know, conversations with people in the community. And I think, I guess I feel strongly that this covers some of our areas that were kind of gray, and I think that's what we were very concerned about, being, you know, open and wanting to, to move forward. So, I mean, I guess I feel that this achieves a great deal.
You're referring to the revised document? The revised document?
Right.
So we do have a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion?
So I have some objections to the original document. But first, I want to say that I think, I think if we do anything, it should be a unanimous, unanimous decision. I think it'd be really a mistake to pass a document by a split vote. So the first encounters, but the community pretty heavily. And, you know, people who I would, who I classify as more conservative came forth and raised some objections. And that's why you see some of the words in here today in the revised edition, because it was in response to those concerns. The new wording in the second "whereas" is because it more fully covers all the protected classes that weren't listed in the first document. The addition of words in the third and the revision of the fourth were to put a limit on the openness of the statements. So as they were written, they were fairly open. And in fact, I had the feeling that if I had voted for the original version where it says, "We will not discriminate on the basis of immigration status," I might be very well breaking my oath of office.
How?
Well, we discriminate on immigration status in all sorts of ways. If we don't respect immigration status, we just set it aside, how is that according to the laws of the state of Iowa?
But there are situations where immigration status is a protected status, and they are protected by laws. Again, it's not law. This is just a statement. We don't have to go into the intricacies of, like, when we can discriminate against race and when we can't discriminate against race.
Right, I'm just telling you how I reacted to it when I read it, and other people reacting to it.
When did you read it?
Hmm?
When?
When did I read it?
Yeah. Because it was available to us November 22nd.
Yeah, but that's a red herring argument.
It's not a red herring, it's a fact. It was available to us November 22nd, it was presented to the council. We were asked if we had questions to present them to DEI, meet with the DEI. That was two months ago. We should have done it then.
So you're saying...
What I'm saying is, we've had time...
Your opinion doesn't matter because I didn't read it when you wanted me to read it?
No, I'm not saying your opinion doesn't matter. I'm saying you've had sufficient notice, this is something we can make a decision on tonight, that's what I'm saying.
All right, I'm just telling you my arguments, okay?
That's all.
You're supposed to listen to them respectfully.
I am listening respectfully. I'm not... Please continue.
I apologize, I interrupted Doug. I didn't realize that you weren't done with that sentence.
All right. The idea of going for a list of definitions of words, I thought was absurd. We don't do anything like that in the city government. We have documents stand on their own merits. And as we discussed at the last meeting, this document had multiple interpretations. Different people were interpreting in different ways. So also, we don't do that in city government. We adopt documents that are well-defined, have a varying narrow range of definitions of words and phrases, and the first edition of that document didn't meet that standard.
Mary's bond?
Still doesn't meet that standard.
Mary's bond?
Hmm?
Mary's bond? You're done? All right, can I say something?
Yeah.
This is, this is a statement of intent. It's not law, it's not code.
No.
Right? So it's a general principles. So the idea that it has many definitions, well, you can come up with any, any statement, any document, and you can come up with many definitions. That's not unusual, that happens all the time. It's just a statement of intent. What direction, what are we trying to present to the City of Fairfield? I don't think it's a confusing statement of that, it's a confusing statement in that regard, it's maybe 200 words, maybe 200 words. It's very simple. And it's either, you know, we want to present ourselves as a city that is inclusive, that is equitable, that does protect the rights and uphold the rights and treat everyone with dignity, right? All, all those groups that are mentioned in the statement and beyond. Or we, or, or we want to present some other picture, or we want to present some other kind of Fairfield, if you will. And I think this is the Fairfield that we want to present if we want to continue in the direction of being a dynamic city that can grow and that attract people, that makes city, the city a better city. A city that's, a city that grows, a city, a city where people are going to have, have lives what they enjoy, a city for families, a city for individuals, the whole spectrum of, of humanity, that can come here in peace and with mutual respect, enjoy their lives.
From my perspective, I would hate to see us just throw a stamp of approval on something that we haven't done our due diligence. And with all respect to all of you, I love you all, I work with a number of you, I know a number of you. There were points brought up in the emails that were sent to us that I personally need to research, words, verbiage, terminology. I'm trying to figure out why we've included military status here when it's not on the state level. I'm a military brat, so I'm very curious about that. The word sanctuary city was brought up to me. I feel like we'd be foolish to throw our stamp of approval on something that we haven't done our due diligence in researching and making sure that it is a solid document. Yes, there's, the foundation, the basis of the document will remain, but we need to make sure that, I guess, as government, I mean, I don't want to say I guess, but as government, that we've done our due diligence and that the verbiage and the terminology used here is something that we've done our research on, so.
I think military status is either in federal or it's one of these that John gave us.
It's in the one you gave us, but it's not in this one, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I just, like I said, there were things that were very courteously, courteously brought up in the emails to us that I personally needed to research, because I'm just naive, I guess, and I didn't know all the terms, but, and especially, you know, you're, you're wanting to put forth the original, and whether we do that or whether we do this, I need, I need more time to look into this personally before I can feel like I've given an educated approval or disapproval, so.
I don't object to waiting. I think we should have the best document we can get. And I don't think anyone really objects to the basis of this.
And if there was something waiting on this, like, if we weren't gonna get a grant because of it, I would understand the need to push. But like, why would we want to shove something through that we haven't put our best effort into it? I mean, I'm not saying that the committee didn't put their best effort into it, I very, I commend you guys, it's not an easy job. But I'd like to see us at least all know that we've done our due diligence, and I personally can't say I have. Because, like I said, I, I've been educated by the emails I've received.
Okay, so we do, again, have a motion and a second on the floor to pass the original. So if there's no further comments, I guess Rebecca, please call the roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Pam?
No.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
No.
Florinoi?
No.
So I think that was four to three, correct? In favor?
Yes.
Okay, great. So the original has passed. Okay. So, let's move on to the next item. Consideration of Job Description for Sustainability Coordinator. And, so Mark, hang on, because people are gonna leave, it looks like.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I didn't even see you hiding back there.
If you will leave the chambers, please, before talking, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I felt like something came flying up here.
What, did it?
No, I wondered if it, I had knocked this drawer out from under my chair.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you, counsel, for letting me come before you. I want to give you an update, an optimistic update on the sustainability coordinator project. I have six points I want to cover, that's what's on the handoff that I gave you. The first is, you've already seen the sustainability coordinator's job description, and I'm hoping that you will approve that tonight. One of the things I want to call to your attention is, in that job description, it says that the coordinator will devote 20% of his or her time to Fairfield's waste reduction. If you recall, when you passed the original resolution, it was 1/3. And that was because at that time, we thought $45,000 was gonna do it, and Fairfield's $15,000 represented 1/3 of that. It became pretty apparent to us that $45,000 was not gonna get the job done with a quality candidate. And so rather than come back to the city and ask for more money, we just raised more money. So now Fairfield's contribution is about 1/5th, not 1/3. And I don't know if you want to change the original motion, or if you're comfortable to just let that ride. I just wanted to call that out and make sure you're aware of that. The second thing that I wanted to mention is that, well, that's, that's it. So I don't know whether you need a motion to approve the job description, or...
Can I, I have one question, you said you raised more money?
Yes, we did.
Is that gonna be in perpetuity? Is that a ongoing...
Yes, and I'll talk about that in a little bit.
Okay.
Yep. Maybe you want me to finish the whole thing, and then we'll come back to specific points?
I'd go ahead and go through it all, so we know what we're...
Okay, okay. So the second thing is, so Fairfield has asked the coordinator to commit some time to reducing Fairfield's waste, and we're fine with that. I'm pretty sure that whatever the coordinator does, Fairfield's gonna benefit from it, so I'm not worried about that. The council has so far only committed to the first year of this project, and we would appreciate it if you would consider funding years two and three. You said you'd consider funding years two and three based on the success of year one. I would request that the council would provide us with some kind of objective data, objective criteria that we could put before the sustainability coordinator, so that, saying, "This is what the city wants to see, so that we can succeed." We don't want to wait till a whole year has gone by and then have you say, "Well, no, that didn't go the way we wanted." We need to know how you want it to go upfront. So we're gonna use the job description to, to measure performance. If you have, would like some other criteria, we'll be happy to talk about that. Just want to, I just think it's fair that if, if that's, you're gonna be your stipulation, that would be, there would be some kind of criteria set forth. Third, our funding update, so... So, we decided that we needed to raise between 70 and $75,000 per year to be able to get a decent candidate, because it's going to cost us $10,000 or more to pay for benefits and, and office setup and that sort of thing. So, um, we hit our goal one. Our, our year one goal has been surpassed, and I think that's a good thing, because as any of you who've ever been involved in fundraising know, just because people promise they're going to give you money, they don't necessarily give it to you. So we want to have a little bit of a cushion. Years two and three were a little bit short, but we're very close, as long as the city, uh, continues to participate. So, um, along those lines, we have, uh, opportunity, we have some plans to close the gap. We have a generous donor that came forward and offered us a $10,000 match per year for every pledge that we obtained during the month of January. And as you can see, under point four, we've collected $8,925 towards that match for year one, $7,650 for year two, and the same for year three. So we're really getting very close. And, um, with the, with the pledges that we have already, and the matches that we have already, we are at about $206,200 for all three years. Obviously, our goal at 70 to 75,000 per year is going to be $210,000 to $225,000. We're getting really close. With that match, um, we need, if we get all the match money, that, in other words, if we get another $1,075 pledged for all three years, and another 100, $1,275 for years two and three, we will have $217,750, which would meet our goal. So we're really close. We'd like to get your approval on the job description and, uh, post the job and, and start vetting candidates. Further, we're, we're proposing that we establish a sustainability task force, a lot like the one that we had some years ago, uh, when there was a Go Green Committee. This one would be a little bit different, because it's not a city committee, exactly. We recommend that there would be either nine or 12 members on it, and they would be chosen based on their passion for, or expertise in, uh, or their technical knowledge, and their time availability. The task force would work closely with the sustainability coordinator, and would ultimately oversee his or her work. And we would strongly recommend that the city of Fairfield, MIU, and the Sierra Club each appoint three members if there's nine, or four members if there's 12, to the task force. And that, we propose that the sustainability coordinator's oversight and reporting be handled by a three-person management team, which would be a subset of the task force. Any questions?
I'll ask you a question in the job description?
Yep.
Um, you mentioned simple IRA?
Yes.
Do you know for sure that, in fact, is the right, um, vehicle? I know that's my area, right? So, I, I just thought maybe you might want to put retirement plan, because if they're-
Are you implying it's not?
Well, sort of. If they're an employee of MIU, which maybe that's not the plan.
They're no, 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 they're an employee of Pathfinders, Pathfinders.
Ah, apparently I missed that. Okay.
It's number six.
Yep, it's all going under Pathfinders, nothing to do with MIU. Except that MIU's contributed.
So if that's the right venue for them, or right vehicle for them, great, fine.
I'm happy to double check, but that's what, uh, Aston-
They, they should know.
I used to be an employee there, and that's what they offered us.
Okay, great. That's the only thing I had a question about.
Okay. Any other questions or clarifications? So I'm, I'm-
Well, I will-
Jason, do you want to pull the job description up, so it's on screen?
I will have a question about the funding, but not right now.
Okay. Next page, I think.
Page four, I think.
There you go. It's two pages.
Yep. How do you, how do you plan to broadcast this to get a good net of applicants?
We've been networking with sustainability coordinators throughout Iowa.
Throughout Iowa, okay.
And DNR people, and we think we can get pretty good exposure.
You do, okay.
Through those, through those, um-
It's a pretty specific job.
It is a pretty specific job, and I imagine it's a pretty tight community. And I imagine, once we get it out there, we'll, it'll spread pretty quick.
I may have missed it. You may have said it. Where are they going to offer that at?
They're going to offer at Pathfinders.
At Pathfinders.
Pathfinders has, has office space, and has often also offered some, um, administrative support.
Oh, great.
So...
Since I wasn't present previously when we were maybe discussing this, um, do you remember, does anyone remember some of the objective criteria that, that was proposed in order to approve the year two and three funding?
It has not been proposed yet.
It just hasn't been.
Never been discussed.
So there've been, okay.
So do we need to take this, are you, uh, we, we're going to take a vote on this in, in its entirety? Is that how you want it, Mark?
Well, um, I, I specifically would like the council's approval of the job description.
Okay.
Uh, I'd love to have you say, sounds good, go ahead, with everything else.
Why don't we take them one at a time?
Okay.
I'd make a motion to, um, move forward with the job description, as has been proposed to us tonight in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved a second to approve this job description. Uh, Rebecca, will you please call a roll? Or any other discussion or questions, we should say.
I do, but it's on another point.
Okay, so, so go ahead and call the roll for that particular thing.
Anderson?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Esti?
Andy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Pam?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That was approved.
Thank you.
So I guess my question is to the council. She's requested that we come up with what our requirements of continuing participation for years two and three are. Would that, what committee would that go to?
Environmental?
Yeah. Environmental franchise?
Yeah, I think we could discuss it.
So I guess I would make a motion that we would, um, task environmental franchise with working with March for our requirements of continued participation in funding?
We already had a motion to that effect.
You already do have one?
Last summer.
Okay.
So, the, the, the environmental franchise committee is the point of contact for the Sierra Club.
Right, but she's, she's talking about what would be the criteria, would, would the environmental and franchise committee come up with criteria that you will use to decide whether the city will commit to years two and three? Because the city has so far not committed to years two and three. And, uh, and that's fine, except that I, I don't want to wait a year to find out that you're not happy.
That we don't like the person.
What it is you want.
Right.
It's her request under point three, point, or letter B, is that we actually give attainable goals that this person-
Right.
But I just assume that they would do it, since they're already the point of contact, but if you want to make a separate motion, it's fine.
Do we need it? Do we need a motion for that?
I don't think so. I think, I think environmental franchise needs to probably just to-
Just do it?
Get together, and, yes, and they can, they can present it to council.
Okay, so we-
But I don't think we need a motion for them to-
I'm presuming the task force will do that work and bring it to committee for review and approval? And they may put input into it, something like that.
The task force, like the proposed sustainability task force? Are you talking about a different task force?
Proposed task force.
Who is part of that?
Because the task force isn't the city. This is our, I mean, we're responsible for the money, so I think the city needs to come up with the requirements that we want to see.
Okay.
If we're going to spend the money.
To the extent that we're, to the extent that we're contributors.
Right, yeah, it's just, it's just our contribution is all she's asking for, not anybody else's.
Sure.
So we should work with the environmental franchise committee, then?
They're very aware of that requirement for the, um, time commitment by the sustainability coordinator in response to, or in proportion to the amount of money we're putting in.
Okay, thank you.
To be clear, we're putting in about 20%.
Right.
So 20% of the time of this sustainability coordinator will have to deal with recycling and, uh, issues with solid waste.
For the city.
For the city, right.
Yeah. And I don't think there's any problem about that. I think that'll be easily covered.
Does everybody understand what we talked about last summer?
So we would just have to develop criteria for those specific city actions or goals that the sustainability coordinator-
So it doesn't sound like we need a motion?
Okay, good.
No second?
Okay.
I'll just ask on number five regarding the task force. I mean, maybe it's premature. Are you looking at it at a date? You want to get the hire, the person hired first?
I, I think it would be a good idea for the city and MIU and the Sierra Club to start those conversations now. Because we bring somebody in who doesn't know the city or the people. They're going to be relying on this, on the task force to help them decide who's appropriate.
Okay, so we'll start that process right away, then?
I think we should.
Okay.
Anything else?
Do we, are we upping the money that we're contributing again?
You're welcome to.
No.
For some reason I thought, I'm not sure that you said it, but for some reason I thought somebody mentioned that earlier.
The money raised, but our percentage went down.
Yeah.
They got a donation.
And there is still a shortfall. Before today, before this-
There is still a shortfall if we wanted to contribute towards that.
Okay.
And you could contribute to that shortfall very easily and cheaply, and get, because we have a match going right now. Come on down.
So, could, just to be clear here, um, when Mark and I talked about this, so correct me if I'm wrong, it was $3,000 earlier, but you must have closed the gap sum, right?
I have closed the gap sum.
So, if they get, is it $2,350 for years two and three?
If, yes, if we get $1,075 pledged for all three years, that will reduce the amount that we need for two and three to $1,275.
Okay.
So it's, you know, it's a-
Well, when you and I had talked, we talked about two and three.
Right.
Only order of $3,000, but the idea here is, if the city could commit out at two, years two and three, then the city would leverage its money 100%, double the money because of this match that's available until January 31st. So I was going to recommend to the council that we take that action in years two and three, and take the money, or commit the money out of the same fund that we committed for the first, um, decision to commit $15,000. But now just commit $2,350 now?
$2,350 for year two and year three.
Year two and three.
But I, but I also need the $1,075 for your money. If I may make a suggestion?
Sure.
We have seven days left, and I'm confident that we're going to raise a bunch in that time. And so, could I come back to you in two weeks and tell you what the remainder is, and at that point, if you're interested, you could fill in that gap?
But in two weeks, we will have lost the capacity to match, correct?
I get it. I think I can stretch it till the next, to, to that meeting. I think I can approach the donor and get that.
Our next city council meeting is going to be February 14th.
Oh, that's a long time away.
If we're using our portion of the $10,000 ahead of time to get the match, you're still going to be short. That's not going to, it's not going to make up the difference. You need additional money to get the match, plus our $10,000. So us donating ahead of time a little bit of, of the $10,000 we want to donate is not going to get you where you want to be.
No, we've already committed just to year one.
You've only, you've committed $15,000, you've committed $15,000 to year one.
But aren't we talking about committing $2,350 of our $10,000 in years two and three now?
Additional to our $10,000.
Additional to your $15,000.
$15,000.
$15,000, okay.
Additional to the $15,000.
Just to our original $5,000, right?
Okay, let's pack it up here. I think the original plan was $15,000 a year for three years, correct?
Correct, that's the request.
We win $15,000 for the first year.
Correct.
And now, my thought was, well, if there's this match out there available to us in years two and three, if we committed whatever's left over on these matching funds, just that extent, not the full $15,000 for two and three, but just enough to make the match.
To get the match.
To leverage our money and help the Sierra Club, because they're doing a great job, that we would go ahead and commit those funds, just that portion, that would, that would consume the rest of the match. That was my thinking. So if the balance of matching funds available is $2,350 in years two and three, I was going to recommend to council that we go ahead and commit just $2,350 at this point for years two and three to meet the match. Then when year two and year three rolls around, make the full $15,000 of commitment, if that's what we decide to do at that time.
So we wouldn't have to develop objective criteria now. We would just meet those matching funds, and then at year two and three, decide at that point?
About the balance.
I think the objective criteria is still something that person needs to have in front of them to work towards.
Okay, yes, alright.
They'll be doing that this spring.
Alright, got it.
Is that clear to everybody?
You're talking about it.
The only question I have-
$2,350 now, plus $15,000 in year two.
No, no, $2,350 toward the $15,000.
And you're-
So the question I have for you, Doug, is why are we, why are we not hitting the $10,75, to help them get their match? Because we've already committed year one?
We can do that too if you want, but when we, Mark and I first talked, it was, we just talked about two, years two and three.
Two and three, okay.
If the council wants to leverage all of that money, then I say go for the whole thing, because the fund balance is fairly stable. It's around $203,000.
Would it help you if we made a motion tonight to commit up to this, whatever you don't raise in the next seven days?
Beautiful.
What would that limit be?
Up to the $2,350 for years two and three.
Up to $2,350?
For years two and three.
Yeah, yeah.
And that would be, that would come off the 15 we would contribute down the road, right?
If it comes off the 15, we have a shortfall.
We're back to shortfall, okay.
Not in addition to the 15, the years two.
In addition to the 15.
It would have an addition.
Alright, so I was trying to craft this in a way that the council would swallow it, go-
And we've tried to complicate that.
So, uh, I think years two and three, we have to talk about it, right, and see how the first year goes. But, you know, this is a vote of confidence in what they've done so far, and the fact that they get this kind of match from the community. I think we should, uh, take advantage of it if we can. That money's just sitting there not doing anything.
No, I know.
So you want to make a-
We can't use it anywhere else, except to maybe do rebates on-
So you want to make a motion?
If you make a motion that you'll cover up to, what is it, $5,000?
I would just go with the whole amount, and then you have that as leverage to tell people the city committed
$4,700.
$4,600, or whatever.
And if we raise the whole thing, then you're off the hook for it.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that the city, out of the solid waste account, has about $203,000 approximately. Go ahead and commit to, uh, this project, $2,350 in year two and year three, which would be-
$4,700.
Physical year twenty-four and twenty-five. Uh, to the salary of the sustainability coordinator.
Okay.
A second of it.
Thank you.
Moved by Florinoy, second by Rasmussen. To commit $2,350 in years two and three.
Can I ask, just to make it clear, is that in addition to the 15?
Yes.
No, because we haven't decided anything about the 15 in years two and three, so-
It's in addition?
That would almost have reached-
But if we continue?
I would say-
We're not going to deduct that off the 15 that we promised them, that, that we paid in year one.
My initial reaction would be, that's toward the 15, but we can cross that bridge when we get there. No, I think you're referring to the first year, Doug.
They need to know now. Because we need, because they can't use our-
This is separate, they're separate.
And this $4,700 that you're about to vote on, you don't have to pay it until the years two and three. But we still need the 15.
They don't want it if we're going to take it off the 15, because if they get it from somebody else, it'll double. If they get it from us, it won't, because we're taking, we're backing it off the other end.
Are we talking, we're talking about two different years?
Year one and year two and three. Years two and three. If we commit to that year two and three now, and we take that off, what we're going to give them, if they get that $2,350 from somebody else right now, it's going to double.
Well, it's going to double if we get it from you, also.
But we're going to back off?
Not if you take it off the 15.
We're not going to remove it.
So it's going to be in addition to the 15?
If we commit to the 15, yes. If we, if we commit to it.
Well, we'll commit to $2,350 now. And then in year two comes up, if they want us to pay the remaining $15,000, we would just commit the 13, whatever it is.
You already committed the $15,000 for the first year.
You can't do that.
Yeah, you've already committed $15,000 in the first year.
If I understand, can, can I add something, please? If I understand, we've committed $15,000 for a first year.
Correct, yes.
The $4,700 for years two and three would not be affected by that first $1,500.
Correct.
However, they are probably, they are going to ask in the near few, in years two and three, for us to commit the $1,500, $15,000 plus that $23, whatever. Which, the, the sanitary solid waste fund can probably handle. I would say it can handle it. I shouldn't say probably. It can handle that.
So we just need to make sure everyone in the room realizes that this $2,350 that we're committing tonight will not come off of a 15 down the road, if we can choose to continue to participate.
And you may want to amend, you may want to amend your motion, say that you'll pay up to that amount if we don't raise it. If we get it, you don't have to.
You may still raise it, so, yeah.
Okay, so do we, we have a motion and a second, don't we?
Yep.
Like she said, we may want to amend it, that we want to contribute up to.
Yeah.
Well, does someone want to amend it?
Do you want to amend your motion?
No, I wanted you just to put on it and send it over, and then they can use that vote of confidence as leverage to raise more money.
But they're going to have the 2350 one way or the other. If they get it from somebody else, they'll have it. If they get it from us, they'll have it.
I second it because of that.
I know, but if we give it to them, they might encourage someone else to give them a match as well. That's what I'm thinking.
Okay, any other discussion or questions?
Better read the motion back.
Yeah. So, to my understanding, it's to commit years two and three up to 2,350 dollars, 4,700 dollars total, if needed.
Did you want the if needed?
That was my original motion, but okay.
Do you need to strike if needed?
Commit the 2350.
Okay.
We're just committing it.
For year two and three.
So, not if needed, I'm striking if needed. Okay. Okay, so I have Florinoy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thank you.
All righty, thank you.
Thank you, and I, I'd say if there's no other questions, I think I'm done.
Good job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next action item, consideration to authorize allocation of harvest funds received for ongoing understory, understory management work. Cassidy Robinson, are you here?
I am.
Oh, there you are.
Yeah.
You were ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so hello, my name is Cassidy Robinson. I'm pretty new to Iowa, pretty new to Fairfield. I'm loving it here. I am a forester with the Iowa Department of Natural Resources. I've been working with the City of Fairfield's Arbor Committee on the management plan for Lamson Woods. The first step in that plan was a sustainable shelterwood timber harvest in which the city received 14,600 dollars from the logging company owned by Ivan Yoder. And so, our main goals for today are to receive approval or some sort of documentation that that 14,600 dollars remains with Lamson Woods with no time constraint with that. And then the second thing is the post-harvest work in that management plan. I sent that out to bids for all the local forestry contractors, and the winning contractor's contract is here. I don't know if you all have a copy of it. I sent it to Rebecca Loper. But the total cost for his services is 9,266 dollars and 47 cents. And he will be billing or submitting invoices after each practice is complete. And his bid form breaks it down per practice. So, for crop tree release, it's a little over 2,000. For the site prep for natural regeneration, it's a little over 2,600. And basis species removal is a little over 4,600 for a total of a little over 9,200 dollars. And his contract has the time that it will begin on or after March 15th of this year to be completed before December 31st of 2024, which demonstrates the importance that we don't have a time limitation to use that 14,600.
Okay, so the first item, just so you know, is the request to have 14,600 that we receive stay within Lamson Woods, for Lamson Woods.
Correct.
I'll make a motion.
Did we not do that already?
I hope we did formally.
There's been, I've received verbal confirmation, but there's been some concern from other people that if you don't use it within a certain timeframe, then it just goes away. So, we were requesting a document that says it stays with Lamson, you know, for, until we use it, basically.
Does that mean we have to put extra in our accounting for this? Is this just in the general fund? Where is it sitting?
Just create another line item.
Send it into obligated.
Or sinking fund?
Earmark.
Obligated.
Make an obligated, right. So, I'd make the motion to set the 14,600 aside and allocated for harvest funds received, allocated for ongoing understory management work at Lamson Woods.
Second.
Okay, moved by Florinoy, second by Anderson. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Okay, so then the next action item is to accept this contract from Forest Legacy in the amount of 9,266, 47.
I want to make sure to draw your attention to one part I'm not sure if you guys are able to do. It says it includes a down payment of 5% due 30 days after the signing of this agreement. I don't know if you guys do that or not. He can amend this contract if that's not something that gets approved.
Is there any issue there?
Mr. Morrissey says we can do it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
He says we can?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay.
Awesome.
So, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Moved by Toohill?
Forest Legacy.
Second.
Second by Florinoy. Any other discussion? Not, call a roll.
Toohill?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, and thank you for participating. Next action item, consideration of professional services agreement with Crawford Murphy Tilly, Inc. for reconstruct taxiway to the, to the hangars. This is phase three. This is a funding breakdown. Melanie will go through these, this action item and the next one, so.
Yes, so the agreements with Crawford Murphy Tilly are about 70 pages each. So, Jason, if you would open the funding breakdown, that breaks it down into one sheet. So, for the next phase of work at the airport, it includes federal funding and state funding. The federal funding is at 90% grant, and the state funding is at 85% grant. So, what the city has received or will receive is approximately 450,000 dollars of federal grant, 105,000 of state grant, which means that there will be approximately 70,000 of city money that needs to be allocated to this project. Of that, there is, there are two contracts, because one is for the federal and one is for the state. For the federal portion, CMT has a not to exceed number of 49,800 dollars for design services and a not to exceed amount of 11,000 dollars for the bid services. The engineering during construction will be a separate contract later in the process. Then for their state portion, they have a not to exceed amount of 14,900 with the bid services being part of the federal portion. So, your first, the first motion is for the federal portion, which is a not to exceed amount of 49,800 and a not to exceed amount of 11,000. We'd recommend approval.
Can you give me those amounts again?
49,800 for design services and 11,000 for bid services.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Great, thank you, approved.
Okay, and then the second agreement is for the state portion of a not to exceed amount of 14,900.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Toohill. Any questions? Not, please call a roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Okay, that passed. Okay. We're all done with that. And then we'll move on to consideration to provide support of downtown housing grant program application. Who's going to talk about that?
Go ahead.
I can. The Economic Development Committee met here this, this evening prior to the council meeting, received a proposal from a group here in Fairfield to renovate, what's the address? 51 East Broadway. Thank you. 51 East Broadway. The grant from the state would be about 600,000 dollars. The city is, the, the state requires the city to provide a letter of support and some sort of matching funds. The city normally does this through a tax abate, yes, tax abatement. And it's, it would be a 10-year tax abatement, somewhere in the realm of, I'll just say 50,000 dollars, because we're really not sure what the assessed value will. It's basically the, it's the assessed value on the improvements to the building. So, we would still get the, in general, the tax, the general fund would still get the, the old taxes on the building, but the, we would be abating the new portion of the taxes going forward for 10 years. But obviously, they're going to commit, it's nearly a million-dollar project, and this would be a very beneficial thing for the community to have that type of a project in the downtown area. The other nice part about that is it's, it's kind of a historic renovation, so they're going to keep the historic value of that building, and it's still, and the renovations are going to be within that historic value, I guess, would you could say.
That's great.
So, it's, it's the old Mohan Delight Building, or the one on the north side of the square next to the ped alley.
It's like the spy.
That's a historic building.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
It is on the historical.
Registered.
Right, it is.
And they said there'd be what, 10 or 11?
10 to 11 residential units. Residential units and three, three commercial.
So, you think the improved valuation will give us enough to cover the grant match?
We're just, we're just committing the tax abatement of the improvements to the building.
Don't we have to commit a certain percentage?
Right, yeah.
No.
Yes, our, our tax abatement plus the local match from the personal investment would.
Would make it, for sure.
Mean.
So, we approve the letter first, don't we?
The letter is being, we've been asked to remove that for public consideration.
So, just the resolution?
Yep.
Yeah, just the resolution.
Motion to approve resolution?
Second.
Moved by Gandy, second by Florinoy. Any other discussion, questions? Not, please call a roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Ham?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thinking about that building. Thinking about the building.
Yeah, it's going to be a great project. It's exciting.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Okay, the last resolution is a tax abatement application for 61 South Court Street, Drish Holdings.
Which is now a big acai.
Correct.
Yes.
It's a three-year abatement. This is a normal abatement that we normally do on improvements to buildings like that.
The exemption is for a period of three years.
I, I thought it was a three-year, and thanks to Katie, we are, I'm correct. But yeah, we're just, again, we're, we're abating the improvements to the building for three years for this business to help kick them off.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is standard abatement.
Yep, same thing we've done for a lot of people.
You just mentioned three years, I just thought.
The years.
Something said that before. This is standard, Tom.
Yep.
Moved by Anderson, second by Toohill. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll. Anderson?
Yes.
Toohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
I'm not thinking about the building.
Ham?
Thinking about the building.
Florinoy? Esti? Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that was approved unanimously. Okay, we're through the hard part, gang. We're now, we're on the downhill slide. Under the mayor's report, I have some board and committee appointments on park and rec. It's a reappointment for Terry Kness and Ron Mullen. We are looking for an additional person. Dr. Terry Cochran has, his term has expired. Always like to give a couple names to Todd if I can, two or three names. So, if you, I'm just saying, if anybody's interested in serving on that board, let me know. I do have one name, but we'll see.
You're looking just for a member, not for a chair? They're going to promote from within?
He was the chairman, right?
Yes, he was chair. So, they'll have to choose a chair.
They do some.
Yeah. And I think we can do these all together. Under the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, I'd like to appoint Matthew Johnson, and Matthew is here tonight. He's a young professional here in Fairfield and has, feels like he can contribute to this committee. And I've known Matthew for a couple, three years. And so, I would, I'd like to entertain a motion from you to appoint all of those.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Motion carried. Conference board, I meant to bring my folder in here to give you more detail, but I think I'll give you the, the general. Conference board is made up of the mayors, supervisors, and we go over the budget for the county assessor and approve their budget in that office and their salaries, and, and then there's a levy for that. And the good news is, is that levy is being decreased because we have brought legal services in-house that was previously outsourced to a firm, I believe in Des Moines. And Mike Brown is not doing that work for us, so, and I apologize, I forget what the, what the difference was levy, but it's, it's pretty good. So, it's good news for your taxes. So, I wanted to report on that. We just, we just met. So, the, the next meeting will actually get the budget approved, so. That's all I have. City attorney report. John, do you have anything?
One, one thing. Do you need a speaker?
Uh-huh. Yeah, or at least get a mic to your table.
Am I okay? Yep. All right. Councilwoman Ham has sent me something about social media policies and recommendations, which I'm in the process of looking over right now. It's fairly extensive. I think probably, next time we have a work session, I'll try to develop some materials with Judy. But it's something that, it's partly liability and cursive, it's partly public relations, it's partly things that we can handle things certain ways without necessarily doing as much as are required with an alternative. Public records law and open meetings law, there are some things about social media that we should be aware of, and also some things that you probably don't ever want to do on social media. I've had a couple seminars in the last five years. I suspect that the League of Cities has had some too, and I think Judy's tapped some stuff that she sent me an email about. So, we'll have more to say on that. But anyway, I think it's probably a subject for maybe a half-hour discussion at least at a work session. You know, I got more to say on that, Judy?
Are you saying a work session with us, with Personnel Committee?
Well, I think the Personnel Committee would be behind whatever the recommendations are.
Right.
are.
Right.
But the whole council should talk about it. We all, we all use social media in some way.
Right.
And, uh, there's consequences, so...
Okay. So, will we craft a formal document, a formal policy?
What we had, uh, done was the, um, guidelines of just how to be informational for the city with our, uh, Facebook page, and, um, and so, we sent the guidelines to John to look over.
Yeah, my thought would be that we'd add to the guidelines some things where life has happened to different towns, and there's some cases behind each of those policies. We'd kind of get a familiarity with the best practices.
We were asking him if there were things on there that we had in the guidelines that maybe we'd want to delete, or were there additions? And I think that's what he wants to bring to us, is things that we'd be aware of. So, our, uh, recommendation would, um, be then, uh, to the council that, um, the work would be going, um, this work would be done under the administrative office here at the City Hall, and, um, that's...
Right.
So, we will get that done then, John.
Oh, and the character of the posts would change.
Yeah.
And the comments would be turned off.
We were, yes, and the, turning off the comments, so that way it's just informative, and, um, then we don't have to be concerned about that aspect of it, or people getting misinformation because they saw something in a comment. We were concerned about that. Um, and also then, uh, funneling, if people have questions, funneling those then through calls to either council persons or to, um, City Hall itself during the day, so...
Anything else, John?
No.
Okay, great. Committee and Board reports. Uh, Judy, you just sort of reported.
Just finished, yeah.
Anything else you would like to talk about in the Personnel Committee?
That was cool.
Okay. Um, Economic Development, Tom, we've covered that. Anything else?
Nope, the Mohan Delight Building, that was it.
Okay, Jefferson County Service Agency. Doug?
So, we had a meeting, uh, last Tuesday, this past Tuesday?
Yes, yes, that's right.
And we just, uh, well, we gave them the result of the city's vote on their proposal.
Right.
And then they elaborated a little bit, uh, on what they would do with the transition if, um, the dispatchers already moved from the city employment to county employment, but that wouldn't necessarily happen that way, but they just talked about, um, the actions that they would take if that transition or decision were reached. Um, I asked Supervisor Hamilton to email me, they did not have it in writing, so I asked him to send me something in writing, and I haven't received anything yet. So, I don't have anything to show you in that regard. I really would really prefer to have them give it to us in writing, so I can show it to you before I just tell it to you orally.
Right, our next meeting with the JC, the next meeting of Jefferson County Service Agency is February 4th at 8:00 here, and the county has promised between now and then to prepare and provide for us a written proposal outlining or no, detailing how they would, if, if, if the city employees...
What that would look like.
The communications specialists, the dispatchers, if they became, if that, that department were controlled by the county, how would the employment picture look? We can't say how would the transfer employees look, because it wouldn't be a transfer of employees, right? Because they'd have to resign, or the department that is, if it were run by the county, they'd have to put out public notice for the, for the potential employees, they have to interview and so forth, and go through all the processes required to by Iowa code. So, it wouldn't necessarily be a seamless transfer from one department to another. It could be, it could be quite, in our opinion, it could be quite disruptive, so we're skeptical. Nonetheless, they're going to present us with a detailed proposal by the time of our next meeting.
Which is next week.
Which is next...
February 4th.
Meet, that's right.
Next, and I hope, well, we, and we also don't know how they'll classify the job descriptions, like, would they advertise for seven dispatchers, or would they advertise for five dispatchers and a supervisor and an assistant? Because all of our people would lose their titles and positions...
Years of service and...
When we release them on, you know, if that were to happen on June 31st, and then they would have to decide how to hire back, if they decide to hire them back.
Right, there's a host of problems, as you can imagine.
It's chaos.
That's why we still believe, we've made this present, we've made this comment to the council, we have your support, that the simplest, fairest way to resolve the issue is for the Emergency Management Commission to levy, uh, be, have the authority to levy to fund both the Emergency Management Agency and the Communication Dispatch, Communications Specialist, the Dispatch Department. And I believe, as I understand it, the, the Emergency Command Management Commission is going to have a meeting scheduled, I believe, for July 30, I'm sorry, January 31st.
Correct.
The Emergency Management Commission, as we recall, consists of nine members, one county supervisor, the county sheriff, and all seven of the mayors, including our mayor. So, uh, I, we think, we don't, we, we, I, I think on the agenda, we hope on the agenda is for us to be able to present to the, to the Emergency Management Commission our, our plan, or our suggestion that they use their authority to levy, uh, to fund the EMA and the dispatch center. So, we're gonna make that present, our hope is to make that presentation to them next week.
And not to request them to make a decision that night, of course, but just to inform them, so they can make a decision later, answer their questions.
Right, it's still, you know, we talked about, there's two tracks, right? There's this county, the county and the city is, are negotiating with perhaps some way to resolve this issue, where the, we believe the city is paying more than its fair share, a lot more, and over 20 years, I believe Aaron says something in the order of $2 to $3 million plus. So, we're trying to resolve that issue. We either can resolve with an agreement between the county and the city, or we can go the way of the EMC levying and resolving the problem going forward, we think in a very simple, clean way. But, so we're going, we're still going with two tracks.
Right.
We're not gonna solve anything tonight, anyway, but just curious, if, if they, in their proposal of them becoming county employees, who do they report to?
Sheriff.
Sheriff.
So, the county supervisors can't promise anything, because the sheriff doesn't report to them, correct? He's an elected official.
He's no, they have no authority over the sheriff.
That's a very good point.
Okay.
Right. But they, don't they write the job description, John? The supervisors would advertise it?
But they don't. But once they're hired...
No, they don't have the authority, but, but they...
Once they're hired, they're under the sheriff's jurisdiction.
Sure.
Okay.
They do.
Okay. But I have a couple of questions for you, John. Um, so, we don't have a budget.
You're all right.
We don't have a budget yet for this, uh, Law Center, although we're supposed to have one by January 15. And I, I emailed them a year ago, and talked to them in person in August, and here it is, a year later, and we still don't have anything. So, reading through this 28E, um, maybe the county supervisors aren't giving us the budget, because they don't have the authority to do it, or they don't have the wherewithal, but...
They've never had to do it before, Doug.
Well, I know that, but they certainly have budget money.
All right.
Hmm? Sorry?
I'm on.
Okay, they've never had to do it before, but we've had a year to talk about this.
I'm glad I got it.
So, my question to you is, reading this 28E, is the sheriff responsible for putting the budget together for that building, or who would be directly responsible? Maybe we're talking to the wrong people, I don't know, but...
The agency's supposed to do it jointly.
Well, but...
That was the concept, but he hasn't ever done it, and you've raised the questions with the commission for the last two years. And probably, if we submit one, they're gonna come up with a counter. That's okay, that's the way joint things work.
Let's get started on it, you know?
Yeah, but, uh, I think, you know, we're running out of time. I mean, at some point, that budget's supposed to be in front of us in another three weeks, we're supposed to be advertising, so we can talk about where we're gonna be by, what, March 15?
Yeah, but as you pointed out, if their proposal to hire dispatchers is serious, they would need the budget, half a million dollars for that, roughly. Is that right?
Right.
Okay.
That's the general fund, right? That's what they're proposing?
Out of their general basis.
Because of no levy, okay.
Okay, so, in regard to the budget, they also argue that dispatch salary should not be part of the budget, even though I pointed out to them that 28E in paragraph three specifically states, you know, the dispatchers are part of the 28E. How do we resolve that? If they don't accept that, and we think it should be in there, who adjudicates that decision?
Well, if they do what they're proposing as far as taking it over, uh, it should be in there as far as the 28E. Uh, if we do it the way we talked about, as far as separating it into a standalone dispatch center...
They've withdrawn that proposal.
Yeah. That, that would make sense then, to, uh, let it have an independent standalone budget. But right now, if they're gonna take it over, you're right, they need to budget for it.
All right.
And they, they wouldn't necessarily have to levy the first year, maybe they're sitting on a pot of money or something.
But those salaries would be part of the budget that we approve as the service agency.
Right.
Now, I may just point to them earlier, because they were concerned about not having authority over the salary changes in employees from year to year, and I said, well, it'll be in the budget, and you have authority over approving or not approving the budget, so you do have a say in how salaries might change from year to year. Okay. Then the last thing I, I wanted to share with the council is, um, the sheriff, uh, okay, I've been asking for a capital improvements plan for the building, five and 10-year plan, and we received a PowerPoint presentation from the sheriff last fall. Paul, were you at that meeting, or...
I was at a meeting when there was a PowerPoint presented, I don't know if that...
That's the only one, so you, okay.
Yeah.
So, all right, we, we saw the PowerPoint, and then, uh, uh, last meeting, we found out that they had started a $22,000 project on the water system. Again, we don't have anything in writing, and, uh, they did it without our consent, nor negotiating the salaries, or the cost split of that project, which is clearly laid out in the 28E, that they are obligated to, uh, any expenses over $5,000 have to be negotiated with the city, and, um, an agreement on cost sharing. Well, we weren't even given the opportunity to say yea or nay, because no motion was ever made, and that sort of thing. Uh, if the, um, expenses cannot be decided upon, which they have not been decided upon, because we haven't had a chance to talk about it, the cost of the major repairs shall be borne in proportion to the percentage of ownership of the area repaired, which I'm not sure where that repair work is taking place. So, just so you know, this is the way the city's being treated. We're not, they're not following the 28E in regard to budget, in regard to negotiating with us, in respect to capital improvements, in regard to dividing up the cost of those capital improvements. Took us 15 minutes just to get a tabled motion off the, off the table last meeting, so, we're not making much progress.
But we meet again on the 4th, and they're supposed to have a proposal before us by that time, or before that time, so we'll, we'll see.
Give some thought to this $20,000 expense when it comes, when they bill us for it, if they do, about what you want to do. I, I have my own thoughts, but I think we need to act together in unison, and, um, you know...
Yeah, and I hope the other mayors take a listen to this meeting, this part of the meeting, and just know that they, together, as part of the EMC, you have the authority to, to solve this problem.
So, if they, if you guys go down that path with the levy and the EMC, correct?
Right, EMC with levy.
Will the, the dispatch personnel change employment then? Or will there be, I, I mean, one of the, the directions you talked about was them becoming employees under the county. Right now, they're employees under us, so with that option, would they then become employees of a third party, or would they still be employees under the city, and they would reimburse us?
Our proposal, which I wrote in November, gave to, okay, they created this new 28E document, so they gave it to us empty, no content, so I wrote the 28E in regard to the dispatch, and in there, I, uh, suggested to them that the dispatchers would remain city employees, that the, uh, service agency would put together a budget for communications and dispatch in total, including all the software contracts, the equipment that would have to be purchased, salaries, everything you could imagine with communication. Uh, if they cooperate with us on that, agree on a, on a budget for, uh, dispatch and communications, then take that to the EMC, uh, board or commission for approval and asking us questions. We would negotiate, of course, like we would anything else, and then hopefully they would, then they would levy what they think is appropriate to fund that resource, which would serve the entire county. And the taxes would be levied...
Least disruptive.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering, is, could we still keep them as employees and have them not lose benefits they've come to know 10 years?
That solution isn't the best interest of the entire county, not just the city of Fairfield.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Aaron, those, there's some counties where they're using the levy under emergency management for dispatch. Are those employees under the city or county, or they, do they, is emergency management their employee?
It's a wide gambit.
Okay.
Um, the majority of them, I believe, are under a Emergency Management Commission Board, which is, I think, somewhat separate from the, it's, I should say, it's the Emergency Management Commission, it's a separate board that oversees them, but they're then employees of the commission, and of course, then the, the county writes the checks and all that stuff, so, there would be a change of employment that way.
But could you do it the way where they remain employees of the city?
Yes.
Sure can.
Where the city's the fiscal agent.
Right.
Um, I, I think one of the things that we could certainly consider that would be a benefit on that, if we went that direction, we could give a, uh, they already have an emergency, or not, well, the Emergency Management Board, or the 911 Board is covered by, uh, fire chiefs and the police chief and the sheriff are involved in that. If, if there's concerns regarding operations, I think in that case, you could certainly put something together where the operation is over, oversaw, is reviewed by a group of users, just strictly the sheriff, or just strictly the city, saying, this is the way it's gonna be. I think there's, there's a way we could work that out to the benefit of everyone also.
Great, thank you. Anything else, Doug?
Uh, that's it.
Hey, Doug, thanks for putting in all the time on this. I know it's not anything trivial.
Thank you.
And you too. Thank you.
Paul.
Paul, yes, well, sorry. I had eye contact with you, sorry. And you seem to have jumped right into another wonderful committee.
I'm glad to have, uh, Paul there with me.
Yeah.
So, he's still leaving the EMA side, I'm trying to do the traditional side.
You guys are putting in a lot of work, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the project report, see if we can get it done by 9:30. You got four minutes, Melanie, can you get it done?
I think you have less time than that. But just once, I'd like to be at the beginning of the agenda, just once. I mean, I know, I've been doing this at the second council meeting for eight years, and I can't change that habit, so just once, put me at the beginning.
No. Would you leave?
What?
Would you leave after you did it?
No. I guess there would always be something.
It should be done right now, though.
Okay, so not actually a lot to talk about, um, with the winter weather, not a lot has been going on. Uh, at the last council meeting, we received bids for, or accepted bids for the digester replacement. We found out during the pre-construction meeting that there is a 20-week lead time on that piece of equipment, so we won't be seeing anything happening with that very soon. Uh, the charging station is installed and operational, we have not had any users, but it is, uh, functioning. On Lamson Woods and Diane Bauman Lane entrance, uh, we did also award, uh, for installation of the white vinyl fence along the entryway. That is also on backorder, so, um, the fencing and the landscaping will not happen until the spring. On the fire station, uh, that's where probably most of the work has been spent the last month, is presenting to multiple entities along with Scott and Aaron.
Okay, may I ask, Melanie, how is, how, how has been the response?
Uh, generally positive. There is a lot of people, um, curious as to why it's only a city vote, even though the fire department does cover outside the city limits. Um, the simple answer to that is the funding source for it, since we're using general obligation bonds. Um, we've used this opportunity to inform people how the fire department works and how they respond to calls, and I think, um, that has been received very well. I think it's things that people didn't know. Um, and, I don't know, Scott, anything else? But generally, generally good. We'll have, uh, two public meetings here at City Hall, one on February 7th at 5:15, and one, um, February 17th at 7:00 PM. We've got about a 30-minute presentation that we've done to all of these groups that we will do, and then stick around to answer any questions of anyone who does come to those meetings. Our task force is busy.
Fundraising.
Fundraising and getting the word out there. They will have some "Vote Yes" yard signs available here in the next couple of weeks. And so, so far, generally positive. Of course, there's always going to be someone who just doesn't want to spend any money at all. We've got those comments as well. And then also with the fire station, every Tuesday between now and the referendum, which is March 1st, I have been taking a specific item of the fire station and discussing it in detail on the Facebook page. The first one was just kind of general information. Last week, we talked about the funding. Tomorrow, I'm going to post something about the carcinogens and the health hazards to the fire, the fire employees. So we'll be covering different things in detail for people who like to find their information via Facebook. And then lastly, there's two parks issues that just wanted to bring to the council's attention. While ago, you guys approved cancellation of a 1977 grant with the Land and Water Conservation Fund regarding the tennis courts. The school district has agreed to that as well, so I'll be working on getting that 1977 grant requirements closed out finally. But the other one is that the Park and Rack Advisory Board has approved construction of a nature skate playground at Lamson Woods. The open area in Lamson Woods where the wastewater treatment plant used to be is actually not part of the preserve, so we can do improvements to that area without the Preservation Board's approval. The playground's going to be located close to the trail, again, in that open area, and will be funded by private donations and maintained by the Parks Department. There was a request and fundraising effort from that neighborhood. And again, because we found out that we did not need Preservation Board approval for that, the advisory board and the department want to move forward with that. That is all. I'm done.
Hurry, all right.
Quick, Tom?
Any questions for Melanie? All right, hearing done. I'll take it. Oh, you got something?
Yeah. Budget is going, as you know, budget is going along. I need to request ways and means to look at their calendar for either February the 2nd and 3rd, Wednesday and Thursday of that week to meet. We will be meeting with department heads prior to that, but then we should be ready to meet with ways and means at that point, so that we can then get publications and budget process approval, or approval process going for the state level.
When will you be looking at lost funds?
At that meeting.
The next one you have with ways and means?
Yep.
Well, the applications are all already in, right?
Correct.
So you can come in anytime, and they should be available here to look at before the meeting.
Yep.
You need us to meet both those nights, or you need us to look at those two?
One or the other.
Okay.
I would hope we could get that.
Just.
On the 3rd, I have something already scheduled.
So the 2nd would be the good night for the two of you?
I'm committed on the 2nd already, at 6:00.
Okay.
So.
And you're committed on the 3rd?
On the 3rd.
On the 3rd.
Could we split that any better?
Okay, last.
How about you, Doug?
I don't know, yeah, I'm still trying to catch you.
Last.
When do you want us to have a meeting by? No later than when?
The 7th would be the last day that we would like to present to you the budget and do the lost stuff.
Yikes. You can't.
Any night is fine for me, it looks like.
Is that a Monday?
No, it's a Tuesday.
Oh, it's a Tuesday.
Yeah, the 1st is a Tuesday.
I could do the 1st.
We, I'd just have to either postpone talking to a couple of department heads by then, or try and cram them in on the 31st.
What's your date that you want us to do?
2 or 3.
But.
I don't care.
We're both.
They're both are busy on one of those two days. We need all three of you.
I can do the 2nd.
How long will it take you?
It's usually hours.
Ways and me, or the lost applications take a couple hour, hour, hour and a half, two hours, and then the budget itself doesn't take too long, but.
You couldn't do it the 7th before then.
Well, we could do it on the Saturday.
If you come in and read them all beforehand.
That's the last bitch night that we, I would prefer not to do that one, but.
Are you guys objectionable to Saturday?
I can do Saturday.
Are you objectionable to Saturday?
I will be out of town on the 5th.
All right. We'll figure it out.
Well, we better do it tonight, because we're not going to meet again.
We have email. The whole council doesn't need to suffer with us.
Yeah. We can figure it out.
All right.
Okay.
You guys can hammer that up.
Just a quick question about the budgeting process. Each department head comes up with their own budget for their people, their equipment, and their buildings?
Yes.
And then they submit it to you for conversation?
Yes.
And then you cut it back, probably, mostly?
This year, yes, a lot.
Okay. So in our, in our world, whoever runs the building develops a budget for that building.
Yes.
Correct? Just to be clear, well, we have a class of cultures here, it seems, and I don't know.
Correct.
I don't understand what's going on.
Correct. The department head starts off with the budget, then brings it to City Hall.
Okay.
And then, actually, Melanie, Rebecca, and I looked through.
I will be at the front door.
Taking care of it from there.
Thank you, bye now.
All right, I made my point, so I'm done.
I am too.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by him. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, 9:30, 4, looks like.
I would be leaving Friday night, yeah.